All right, it is November 5th and it is 6:32 and we have a quorum of city council. So I am calling the city council portion of this meeting to order and I will turn it over to Chairman Osborne to call his board to order.
All right, I'll go ahead and call us to order. We have three present here from the board, so we have a quorum.
Excellent. The first item on our agenda is citizens comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizens comments? We do not, so we're already done with that. And moving on to page two. This is a work session tonight. We won't be taking any votes, but it's an opportunity for the Construction Standards Board and council to get together before council does take some voting action at our next city council meeting. You got, how many times have you guys met this year? Have you lost count?
Couple dozen.
Yeah.
Just several.
Unbelievable. And I think the previous year you didn't even meet, or met like one time.
Yeah, exactly. Probably not quite that much, but close.
So, on behalf of council, thanks to the three of you and for the two that can't be here, it's a tremendous amount of work. It impacts the citizens on a day-to-day basis and you are council's eyes and ears to make sure that we're doing the right thing. You work hand-in-hand with staff and just really personally want to thank each and every one of you. I know that you have, you have special skill set, that's why you were appointed to the board, and I know that that skill set makes your jobs much, much more than 40 hours a week to begin with and to commit the amount of time that you have, especially in the evenings when you could be with your family or doing other things that you enjoy. It's just very, very much appreciated. Just want to tell you how much we appreciate all the extra hard work. And I know that Mr. McDonald has given something up this very evening that he would prefer to be at, as well as everyone has busy schedules. So, thank you for that very much. We're going to turn it over. Council, you have before you a document that has all of the changes. We are going to be memorizing these and there will be a test on, no, just kidding. We're going to get an executive summary of the changes that they are recommending and I understand that there were some healthy discussions and we'll have discussions at the appropriate time, but this is all in an effort to make sure we're all on the same page before council finds themselves in a position to be taking votes. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Mayor and council, I echo your sentiments that the Construction Standards Board has done a yeoman's job. This journey actually started back in March. Staff had a review committee and reviewed all of the codes prior to making some recommendations for some local amendments and began meeting with the Construction Standards Board on June 4th. If you're like me, you got these amendments and it went something like wah, 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 Charlie Brown. And I have asked staff to translate these from the intent of the code because as a policymaker, you ultimately need to understand the intent and the impact of what you're adopting, even if you don't understand and appreciate the specific words. So Chief Rosales, on behalf of the fire department as well as the building official, is going to make a presentation. And so there's a lot of pages here, but Andre, Andreas has a very short presentation again. He has grouped things by category to help you understand that these, these specific laws impact this perspective of the code from a life safety, a fire sprinkler, or whatever, so that you know what to do with what you're being asked to vote on. If you have specific questions, the Construction Standards Board is here, but we also have a resident code expert in Assistant Chief DeArmitte. And then Chief Building Official, David Brasicz, can translate the building code for you. There's going to be a recommendation on the property maintenance code. Chief Nagy will be available to answer any additional questions if you have that. And then there's going to be a specific recommendation on the Wildlife Urban Interface Code. The acronym is WILI. And Chief Rosales, before he completes his presentation, will do that. So without any further ado, Chief Rosales will walk us through this.
Mayor, council, board. We have consolidated this way down, so I'm going to be quick. It's like 20-something slides, less than that, I think. So, because we already did like five. So, make it quick, I promise. So, the adoption of the 2018 codes, the Construction Standards Board has worked really hard on these. Those are all of the 2018 international codes. There's one, 2017, the National Electric Code. But those are all the codes and those books range from this thick to thick. So, they have hit each one of those. David has revised or gone through them. We've gone through our portion and the Construction Standards Board has really hit each one of those. So tonight, those are all the ones we're adopting, or we're looking at adopting, and then I'll go over which ones we're not going to adopt. But those are all the ones we are recommending to adopt.
And let's remind council, how often are they updated and when was the last time that we updated them?
Okay, so our, last time we were updated, we, in 2014, the city adopted the 2009 version of the ICC codes. So, so we are currently today operating on the 2009 version of, of all these codes. They're updated every, three years? Updated every three years. And so this is, so we've skipped 12, we've skipped 15, and we've, now we're at 18. So we've skipped all those different versions. So we have lots of versions that we had to cover, lots of changes in between those versions. We covered those. But, so, once we adopt these, the 18, there'll be a 21. So in 2021, there'll be another set of version of codes that we will have to come back and review and, and see if they fit us and if we're going to adopt them at a later date. Good question. Thank you. So, out of all those codes that I previously showed you that we're going to adopt, these codes, the International Residential Code, the Plumbing Code, the Building Code, and the Fire Code, we have made recommendations for local amendments, so changes to that code that fit us. So we've made those changes and we're going to go through and review those changes. That's good. In the International Residential Code, we've made the three changes here for recommendation to amend or remove. So the first one to amend is the crawl spaces to require 18 inches, or sorry, 10 inches on each side of the mechanical equipment. That's basically to give you some, some spacing between on each side of this, like a mechanical equipment such as HVAC or furnace, air handler upstairs in your attic. The second one was, do y'all have, oh, under the house, like for, you clear them, yes. The second one was-
Okay, so I'm going to clarify. You're making it 10, what does the code say? You gotta have a mic. Gotta turn the mic on. No.
The 2018 code was actually requiring you to fire rate the entire-
House.
-house underneath to put in, to replace your unit for repairs or whatever was needed. So that's extremely excessive and practically impossible and unfeasible. So, based on industry standards and dimensions, they're around 27 to 28 inches in width. And so what they're asking for is to put a 5/8 gypsum board or equally rated fire material, a one-hour fire burn to, if you had to get out, gives you that extra time. And that counts the thickness of your floor too, even though it might be wood or plywood, subfloors. It was asking for another layer of protection and a standard sheet of 5/8, of 5/8 sheet rock is 48 inches by eight foot. So by putting it at 48 inches, that gives you 10 inches on each side, instead of having to buy multiple sheets or, it's just, it's just an industry standard size and pretty practical use for standard-sized materials.
Thank you, thank you guys for, because when I, I knew it wasn't a crawl space and it was a crawl space. And when I saw the 10 inches, I thought, that's really not enough room to work. So thank you for clarifying that it's the, it's the fire rate, it stays around the equipment.
It's not the space, it's the, it's the dimension around what's being installed.
Gotcha.
Have 10 inches around.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I just couldn't tell. Okay. Makes perfect sense. Thank you for that.
So number two was a removal of N 1104.1. It was to raise the mighty number 90% on the lamps and y'all recommended this, correct? To change that, to remove it and to, basically y'all are going to let market drive this one, correct? Any questions about this one? No? Recommending to amend P 2801.6.1 to allow PVC to be listed as an approved material, 3/4 inch and larger in the table. So they're adding this back in, correct? It was removed and y'all are putting this back in.
Material for what?
So this is for a drain pan for a water heater.
Perfect sense.
PVC drain pipe has been used for 100 years probably, not 100, but 50 years. And, and for some reason, I honestly think they just left it out. They listed the approved material and PVC wasn't on there and that's pretty bizarre. So, so I'm pretty certain it was just left out.
Good catch.
In the International Plumbing Code, they're removing IPC 308.10. The residential expansion tanks up to 2.4 gallons may be supported by rigid pipe. Instead of expansion tanks, now must be attached to the wall, not hanging off the pipe. This was another recommendation on your behalf, correct? Do you want to explain?
Yes, so residential expansion tanks are two gallons and I even, I made some copies, just, this is from the 2009 plumbing code. And it's pretty common to have these expansion tanks supported by a galvanized, copper, brass, metal, metallic rigid pipe. And it just screws on top and makes it easy to replace them. It just makes sense. It's one of the, it's another thing, it's always been that way. I've never seen an issue with it being that way. Now, I understand that these commercial expansion tanks need to be supported because, you know, they're 10-plus gallons and they do need to have a proper support, but these small residential expansion tanks really, it's not, not necessary.
So this is a good time, council, for us to acknowledge what it, what it feels like what we've done is, we want the house to be safe, we want the residents to be protected, but not to a point that they're, that they're priced out and no one can afford to do the right work. So you're trying to find that practicality with the expertise that you have in the business of what are reasonable rules to expect somebody to do to protect them from themselves, but not make it so expensive that no one can maintain their home. Is that the sweet spot you were looking for?
That's a perfect answer.
Thank you. Yay.
In the International Building Code, we're amending the IBC Table 1004.5 and to allow the occupant load calculations remade as stated in 2009 IBC. We'll discuss this more in the International Fire Code. The Building Code and the Fire Code have the same table and so we have to amend both. So I will talk about this one more-
But when you're saying load calculation, you mean number of people-
Number of occupants inside the-
Because I, load calculation, I'm thinking of weight of a load, but it, you're talking about head count with the-
Head count inside the building.
Okay.
Yeah, who occupied space. So, International Code, Fire Code, amending section of Chapter 1, Scope and Administration. So, as you see this document, there is a whole lot of amendments to the Fire Code. There are requirements in Chapter 1 that we have to amend to fit us, that, because I have only certain staff, so we have to change names, like deputies versus fire marshal versus the fire inspector. So we have to change the way deputies are written, we have to authorize personnel, so instead of it all being on me, I have to push some to him and I have to push some to some other. So we have to amend that in the local code, so you'll see that in the, in one of the amendments in there. The other one is, we've added photographic documentation. The Fire Code actually didn't allow that. So what we added that in, so that when we go in and we do an inspection, we can take photographs. So, for document, documentation purposes. So we've added that in. The other ones we have to do is we have to add, they leave blanks in the code for you to put what your municipal court charge is for if you issue a citation. So we have to add that charge. We didn't change that, we went, we just kept it the same as what it is today in our 2009 version. We just moved it over to the 18 version and left it. It's like up to $500, fine, as established by the court and there's some other-
Is that included in the master fee schedule that we adopted?
These are not fees you sent, it's at the discretion of the court, so it's parameters, so when they issue a violation, it goes to municipal court and it's at the discretion of your municipal judge and they have a span of, a range of zero to $500.
Okay.
Yes.
But you're just saying you just have to fill that in so it's complete?
So that it's complete, so that when you read the Fire Code, it's, it's there instead of just being a blank. Right now, it's currently just a blank.
Did they ever allow photographic documentation?
Did they ever? I don't believe so.
I wonder why.
So, we've, we've added that in. Amending Section 307.1.1, prohibited open burning. Basically, we just, no open burning inside the city limits. There are a few exceptions allowed with the permit. I know this was a topic for discussion.
Lengthy discussion.
Lengthy discussion between ourselves and the board. We can-
Well, give me an idea what the exceptions were.
Exceptions are, so I can read the exceptions for you. One of the exceptions would be is for the purposes of outdoor cooking or warming, so like a, like a fire-
You're still allowed a barbecue.
You're still allowed the barbecue.
Gotcha.
Um, firefighting training, like if we were doing training inside the city, we would be able to allow to do that. And then one of the ones was onsite land clearing with lots greater than two acres. So you had to have two acres or more in order to do some kind of clearing, like, like if the con park was to clear a whole section, we could allow them to burn instead of-
They'd have to just get a permit though, don't they?
They would have to come get a permit and there would be inspections related to that, as going out and do it. And then the last one is prescribed burning because the state park portion of it is in the city. We do, so we allow them to have a, the ability to do prescribed burns.
That they would do anyway, even if it wasn't in our rule?
Even if it wasn't in our-
Nah, that's what I thought, okay.
What about the recreational burning, like a fire ring in your backyard?
Like what? Fire ring, so the, like, it's a warming device, so if you had a, that would be considered a warming device.
So it can be, you can be warming food or your feet, it sounds like, okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead, how are you?
I know this is a silly question, but it says, a few exceptions will be allowed with permit. Do you have to have a, surely you're not wanting a permit to do a barbecue?
No, no, not to do the barbecue. No, that, so the code kind of, the way the code's written, I didn't put the whole code, that would take up three slides.
No, 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 that's fine, I just want to make sure there's some-
No, no permit for the barbecue.
She's just saying you rattled off four or five exceptions and when she reads that, it makes it sound like the except, all the exceptions need a permit.
I said permit.
But I think the permit is needed for the two acres of land.
I just want to make sure you have some common sense in there.
For the land burning and anything else that, yeah, that you would-
The big fires, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Good question. We don't need to have everyone mad because you can't have your barbecue, we have-
No, you can still have your barbecue, it's just waste, waste burning, you can't burn leaves, you can't burn, it can't be a nuisance, essentially, so. Common trash, so you can't burn that. We have, we're provided trash service in the city. Also, the limbs and stuff like that, you chop that up, put it at the curb, the city will, you know, the trash will come by and get it for you, those kind of things.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
The permitted, bless you, the permitted burning is, is, the permit is given under certain conditions. And is there a way for us to withdraw the permit if conditions are, would not allow an appropriate burning?
Correct, yeah, so the, the way the permit would be issued is like, let's say they had two acres and they were going to burn. We would go out, we would check the area first, issue the permit, and then tell them you have 30 days and you have to meet the TECQ requirements and we would give them the TECQ requirement. So if they don't meet those requirements, then it would be, it would not, they wouldn't be allowed to burn.
And then say there was a burning going on and the wind shifted and it created a nuisance for nearby homes or where it was, you know, the smoke was just-
So part of the TECQ requirements would be that it would have to be extinguished at that point. So if it becomes a nuisance at any point, it would have to be extinguished.
Just want to make sure we had it.
So, one thing I'll share with the Construction Standards Board, of all of the complaints that I get in my office, and I do get a few complaints now and then, one of the most consistent ones is people griping about somebody burning trash in their backyard, leaves and burning trash. And it, I get, there's, we all know, there's a couple of addresses of people that, and I understand this, I'm a property rights person too, it's my property, it's my trash, I'm going to burn it. And we get, I get calls from, my kid has asthma, I don't like the smoke, I don't like the smell, I don't like, I don't like, I don't like. If I was going to, if I was in the county, that would be fine, but I don't expect people to be burning their trash in town. So, saying, I don't know how the conversation went and I don't know who was on which side, but I will tell you, I personally thank you for making sure that we're clear that inside the city limits, you don't, you don't burn trash and you don't burn leaves. It, it causes a lot of problems. I don't know if you guys have gotten those calls or not, I think they, I think you pass them off to me. Thank you, appreciate that.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. So this is just city limits, it's not an ETJ thing? It's just city limits?
Just city limits.
Good question.
Michael, you guys have anything y'all want to, y'all want to add? Okay. Next one is the amending Section 503.2.3, surfaces, fire access roads designed to maintain to support the imposed loads of fire apparatus. They got to provide an all-weather driving capabilities. Currently, the code says asphalt and concrete only. We amended it to fit, to allow like, like crushed granite. As long as it's, give me the word. Geotech report that would hold, hold the load of an 80,000-pound fire apparatus, you would be allowed some alternate other than asphalt or concrete.
So that's not a temporary construction access? That is a permanent road that you know you, if there's a fire, your truck's going down that road, then you got to be able to support that.
Yes, correct.
And it has to be stamped and sealed. The question is, did you get specs on the new aerial ladder and is 80,000 pounds still sufficient?
Uh, no, we will be, have to change one.
Okay. When we get the new aerial ladder, we may have to change the tonnage that this is required because right now it's based on a gross vehicle weight of 80,000 pounds. When the aerial ladder comes in, it may have to be solid than that.
Well, I signed the check, signed off on the check for that last week. Do we not know how much it weighs? We ordered it.
It depends on, so it-
Oh, you got to load it with your stuff.
Always depends on the equipment, so.
And then, yes, and, and-
I got you.
They, they can give me the, as the truck sits empty, but once we load all the equipment, all the tools on, then they weigh it again and they'll give us that exact weight.
Okay.
So I have a rough estimate and it's, it's around the 80,000, but the 80, it could go more. But the 80,000 is our trucks as it sits today, so.
You guys have a question? Do I got to have to separate?
Yeah, I do, I do have a question. In your, in the package here, and I don't know if you're going to hit it, it talks about drivable grass surfaces capable of supporting 85,000 pounds. Who makes that determination or how is that determination made?
So, again, it's got to be a geotech report that's sealed and stamped by an engineer.
Got it. Thank you.
So we're amending Section 903.2.11.3, which is the building 35-foot or more. I think currently this says in the code 55-foot. We're going to amend it to say 35-foot in height. An automatic sprinkler system shall be installed throughout buildings with an overall height of 35 feet or more above the lowest level of fire department vehicle access. The reason is, this was a concession made for the business occupancy load calculations on Table 104, for the IFC and IBC. And I'll talk about this in the next slide, but I want to, so this is, any building over 35-foot would then require to have a sprinkler system. Four stories, correct?
No.
Three, three stories. The four-story would require the sprinkler, so.
Well, 30, we talked about 35 feet being the floor level, any floor level above 35 feet. Not the overhaul height.
Because at 35-foot for the height of the building, in my mind, that's two stories in an attic, right? That's like two and a half stories.
Yeah, that would be a two-story can be easily be 35 feet. A two-story house can easily be 35 feet.
So houses are exempt from this because they're residential? This is for commercial structures only?
Yes.
So the overall height is 35 feet, is your intention that-
At three stories or more.
Okay, but that's not, I don't get that out of the way, and it may just be the way that sentence is read, because that's-
It is, it's the way the sentence is written. The intent is, is that with two stories, you can adequately and safely get out of that building.
Yeah.
At three stories, we, we currently do not have the ability to evacuate, that's part of the aerial truck. And the premise of the occupancy, which he hasn't talked about, to go from 100 feet to 150 feet, is because the materials now burn quicker. And so you have less time to evacuate a building. So at three stories, we can't expedite your evacuation well, so we need to buy time with the sprinklered building. So if it's two stories, no sprinkler, at three stories, we'll keep it at a occupancy load of 100, but you have to sprinkler the building to buy those occupants time to get out in event of a fire.
I think you guys should do it based on stories and not based on height, because I think, I would think the same thing, it's 35-foot to the floor level of the, that, that seems to me that would be the floor level of the third story. But if your intention is three stories, then I would amend the code to be three stories and taller. If you're commercial, you got to have automatic sprinklers. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yes. That's fine with me. We, we were just going off of the average story is ground level is like 12 feet-
Yeah.
-for ground, and so that's where we're, does that sound right?
No, the, actually nowadays, the typical height between floors is approximately nine foot six. So you can have a three-story building that is only 27 or 28 feet tall to the lowest level of, to the level of the occupied floor, so-
So that's floor level of the third story?
That, third story could be at 27 feet, yes. So that's why this was requiring the 35 feet or more. The intent was to be able to include buildings that, that exceed that with parapet walls so that we can make rescues often. If people decide to evacuate up to the roof level rather than back down if their egress path is cut off to the second floor, where they could evacuate up to the roof level and still have a fire sprinkler system.
So you're intending the overall height of 35 feet to be the parapet line?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with making it three stories. We just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I was going to ask if we could do it to three stories because even though you're saying it's nine-point-something now, we have a lot of older houses and it's, they're going to be much taller than that.
So, yeah, so the Fire Code doesn't regulate any-
All the businesses as well.
Oh, well, yeah.
For clarity, for the, in this discussion, when you talk about business occupancy, are we referencing multifamily as being residential or business?
Multifamily will be resi, is considered commercial, it is an R2 occupancy. So it is, they are already required to have a fire sprinkler regardless of however many units they have.
Or the height.
Or the height. So, the, the height has no, no bearing on it. The Fire Code already specifically says that a commercial structure that has a residential occupancy to it must be sprinkled throughout. Okay.
Okay, so I know, I have a question. So what if it's like, like an older building downtown, let's say they're building 921 or whatever, and it, it might be only two stories, but it's really high, so maybe we should put two stories or 35 feet, you know, so it kind of connects both. You can, if you go more than two stories, you can still need it, or if you hit over 35 feet, then you still need it. See what I'm saying? Because I know the 921 is going to be two-story, it's going to be commercial, but it's going to be really tall, two-story. I would think so, no?
No.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to, kind of, both ways. And, and I think the, the conversation between the two stories and the three stories is, you can go down a flight of stairs and get out, as opposed to getting caught in the, in the middle.
Or you can jump out a window and still survive with a third story, you may not.
Makes sense.
Okay. We will, we'll change that one. Three stories, so it'll say buildings three stories or more, and then we'll change the overhaul height to three stories.
And, and I don't, I don't know how you do it in code, but it's commercial, we're not talking about residential.
No, so, yeah, so-
So my question is, what about in P4 where we have commercial in a house form? Do they have to have sprinklers or do they not have sprinklers? Because we said that they could have a commercial business one month and two months later be a resident.
So I think the issue is, is that you're not building three-story houses. And I think what the Assistant Chief said is, is that if you've got an R2 code, which is multifamily, and it's greater than that, they're going to be required to sprinkle because of the building. So that goes away. This is commercial, office occupants, because what we've not had is the rest of this conversation. So when he gets there, then we'll debate, we'll debate the classification and they'll debate the classification and they'll tell you what that classification is which drives this train.
And so to clarify, the great question that Councilmember Rogers asked, the reality is that 35 feet has pretty much been the highest buildings we've allowed around town anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
And most of the buildings are two-story. So through both of those, they're pretty well exempt from this mandatory requirement unless they're an apartment or a different use that would require that. So this is aiming towards, in my mind, more of like along 71, the hospital where somebody's going to come in and build a, Mayor Protem, I believe that would be a 27-story office building.
And that was what passed through our mind and we talked about.
Yeah.
They had a very good concern and the issue is, is they don't want to penalize businesses that are already here.
Yes.
So if there is a multi-story building that would be impacted by this, our code at 50% or more is considered a significant enough remodel that they will have to come into compliance with the existing codes. So if you have a building that is three stories or greater and they go in and gut it and are now going to redo it, then there's no reason not to bring it up to code. But as far as, you know, changing offices and remodeling, this isn't going to affect our big, our current businesses. But the thought is new construction, anticipating 71, those kinds of things. And it's a certain classification of office space. And he'll get to that when we get there.
Okay. This just seems like a reasonable middle ground. Y'all are okay with this?
Well, like this building here, you're almost 35 feet in this building alone being a one-story.
Right.
If you went to, if it, you know, so that's why we're saying stories instead of the feet.
We have a fire alarm system too.
We have sprinklers.
And sprinklers.
No, she's right in saying that the classification of the building makes all the difference in what you're...
Yeah, this is a public building.
And it's an assembly, which is a whole different...
Yeah, whole different ballgame. Okay. Okay. So this is another one of those doing a balance that you're not penalized for owning an older building downtown, but you're keeping people safe. Because we do know fires is what wiped out our main street, not once but twice.
The occupancy, it was a compromise.
Yeah, so we'll talk about why the comp, so this was one of the, we amended tables 1004.5. It's a business area from 150 gross to 100 gross. So the gross is, it's...
Number of people, correct? Square footage?
Square footage per person. And so IFC requires a larger square footage per person occupants, business occupancies than the 2009 version. So we've stayed with the 2009 version instead of moving to the 18 version. And then that compromise was, well, we're going to, we're going to allow the sprinkler.
When did it go up? Did it go in 12 or 15 or only went up in 18?
18.
Oh, okay.
And the reason for going up was they did a whole lot of research and found the code to be just kind of outdated. So, but, but we've compromised and we've allowed the higher occupant code do the amendments from the previous slide. So...
Eric, please explain to council what a business occupancy type is so they appreciate the distinction of this requirement.
So business type occupancies are your office buildings, your doctor's offices, general services. It's not what we would normally think of as a retail shop. A retail shop is a group M mercantile occupancy. But so these are geared towards your, your large office spaces or possibly what we're, what we're seeing with greater than 12th grade adult education. So those are not educational facilities. Those are classified as business occupancies. Yes, ma'am. Like the Argent.
Banks.
Banks, yes. Banks, banks would be included in the, be occupancy as well.
I'm betting that, I'm betting those bank safes have some pretty sophisticated sprinkler systems in them.
That's not for the sprinkler systems. That's for your occupancy.
Occupancy, yeah.
Number of people that you can put in a space.
And you guys do gross square footage?
Yes.
And that's for the visitors also.
Yeah.
Just the secretaries with the visitors.
Yep.
During plan review, we take it and we add up all those different spaces and you get a calculation. And that's what your occupancy load, what you post on the board.
Ah, so you, so you do space, you don't do, you don't do the square footage of the slab, you do actual occupiable area inside each?
Yeah.
Right. So when we class, when I calculate occupant loads, I don't include areas such as restrooms or anything like that, storage closet, smaller storage closets. It's mainly for the, the public accessible space and business offices that are, that are used in that space. You take the gross square footage of that and you divide it by the occupant load factor, which is the, right now in the current code, the 150 square foot per person, where we're going to go ahead and go back to 100 square foot per person, which allows more people in the same area that we would normally have right now. Otherwise, if you would take a, an area that would normally allow 30 people based on square footage, the new code would actually reduce that number down to around 22 people.
So in a 3,200 square foot space, because I did the math, it cuts it by 11. That's a lot.
Okay, and you said retail space is different and I would assume restaurant space is different as well.
It's an assembly, yes.
Okay, okay. Are y'all okay? Everybody all right?
Yeah, and none of those, none of those changed. This was the only one that changed.
This was the only one. Mayor Protem?
Explain to me the difference between that and gross in this context.
So gross square footage is the entire area of the floor where you're not taking out exceptions for mounted desks and tables and cubicle spaces and furniture. There are certain exceptions in like an assembly occupancy where you would do net because you have certain fixed seating. So you would use the, the net seating where you would take out allowances for a bar area, where you would take out areas for permanently mounted refrigerators and coolers. For business occupancies, we use a gross calculation because for the most part, everything's going to be kind of movable. So we just use the, the entire area of the space rather than trying to figure out exactly the square footage of every piece of furniture and remove that from the calculation.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Last one for the fire code is the amend chapter 80 reference standards. We had to add 32 NFPA standards to, I didn't list them all, but they're in your, in your deal here. But there were 32 NFPA standards that were referenced in the fire code. We just have to add them and make sure they're in there and they're correct here.
Good job.
The last deal, no local amendments. They're being adopted as written and that's the green code, green construction code, energy code, existing building code, the 2017 national electric code, mechanical code, swimming pools, spa code, and the fuel and gas code. So we have no amendments to those. We're just adopting them as is.
I had a weird question today. Apparently there's a new product that is solar panel shingles. Have you heard of such a thing? What code would that be under? Is it energy green, or is it energy, is it green? Is it residential?
It'd be under the building code.
Building code?
But it could also be under the, it could also be under the energy code as well. Because it probably, they, all these codes work hand in hand. So they're all referenced to each other.
So the building code is the one on the, because solar panels are becoming so prevalent, they have now made amendments to the building code to give firefighters walking space around the panels so that they can do what they need to do safely, get on there, be able to air rate.
These are shingles. They're not a panel. It's, the shingle is the solar panel. Each shingle.
Tesla's, yeah, marketing.
They've been doing that in Germany for a long time.
Okay, cool. Well, since we can't regulate materials, I bring it on.
It's probably currently not in these codes, but in the 2021 code, I would assume that it probably...
Well, I told them to make an appointment with someone who was not me and start having the conversation now instead of, I've already sold it and now I want you to, that we need to have, start having the conversation. So that may be coming y'all's way.
Yeah, David in, both, David and Fire, we both reviewed the solar panel for plans, correct? 2018 international property maintenance code. We spoke with Chief Nagy. We've also pulled this. We're not adopting it this, at this time. We're going to work with ordinances that are specific to Bastrop. We're going to stay with the currently adopted 2000 version of the property maintenance code. That's as is today. We're not going to move. We're going to kind of regulate it by the nuisance ordinances that we currently have in place as well as what they may bring to you in the future. But we're going to bring this back 90 days for review to the construction standards board just to kind of keep it rolling that we don't let it kind of sit back.
If you review the property maintenance code, there are a lot of items that are in other codes. And so part of what we need to do is, is go through and not adopt something twice and then figure out what's not covered. And the challenge for staff is, is that we are updating our nuisance ordinances and rather than adopt a very onerous code, if there are two or three or four or five things we like about it, there's nothing that prevents y'all from adopting it by ordinance and putting it in our nuisance codes. And so that's going to be the process they go through. This and one other thing needs to go back to the construction standards board. So the thought is staff would complete their work. We'll take it back to the construction standards bar, board around March. Let them review it, see if they agree with staff's recommendation and then let them forward you a recommendation in the spring on what the final action is.
You guys ready for a break until March? Would that be okay with you? Okay.
Last one is 2018 international wildland urban interface. This is the WUWE code. The, we are recommending not adopting this at this time. We're going to do some further research with the Texas Forest Service. Our local, they have a WUWE assessment and something team.
Bless you.
They are going to, we're going to assess by parcel. We're going to bring them to us. We're going to drive around and go parcel by parcel and assess, do an assessment. And we're going to start with one specific area and we're going to kind of work out from there. We're going to assess and see if the need is there first. We're also going to look if we need to adopt it by area instead of the whole city, maybe just a specific area that...
Certain character district.
Certain character districts. And then we're also going to look at how does this intertwine with the building Bastrop codes. And so we have a lot of research to do with that. And so that's why we asked to not adopt this.
Give me an example of something that would be covered under this code.
So something, for example, would be defensible space, like not having landscaping so close to your residence, having it further out than being right up against your house, something like that with tree trimming around the top, over top of your dill, not necessarily less trees, but more of the trimming so it's not overhanging your, your...
So the reason that this becomes an issue is back during fire season when we had a burn ban, I spent quite a bit of time talking to the two chiefs about how do we prevent what's happening in California from happening in Bastrop? Having a big complex fire and it coming down the hill and just taking out Bastrop. There is no fire break. So once you get a fire that's fueled, there's nothing that prevents it from keeping its momentum. And back in 2015, quite a bit of urban management of the forest had happened. And they will tell you that that's part of why the MD Anderson plant facility didn't burn. They had done a lot of mitigating and removing, removing the fuel around the building. So when the fire got there, there was nothing to feed it and it stopped. And so part of the concern is, is that we need to make sure, like around Lost Pines and Pine Village character districts, which is Pine Forest and Tahitian Village, that we've appropriately given the fire department an opportunity to stop it before it takes over the city. But it's in conflict with the very codes you're adopting Tuesday night where we plant a ton of trees and we love landscaping and isn't it pretty and isn't it lush? And the challenge I have is when they brought it forward, the Texas Forest Service has this beautiful map, but when you blow it up, it's super fuzzy. And you're not quite sure if it covers Chestnut or if it stops at Jefferson or if it goes all the way down to 71. I mean, it's just, it's just a blob of a map. So the concept works. The concept's great, but it needs a whole lot more interaction because we've got to overlay that with the Iredale district that you're adopting and some other things. So it just needs work. The premise behind it's very important. There are areas of town, we're confident it makes sense, but where do you start? Where do you stop? And we just need to make sure that we're doing it for life safety and not just because we're adopting a code. And that's the part we can't answer today.
So before we get to the recommendations, are there any questions?
Yep. What's a bonfire?
Well, bonfire would be considered like a, yeah, like a mass gathering, like, like the burning of the bees. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I know what I think a bonfire is, but I'm looking at amendment for 307.4.1 and it says that you have to have a permit. And I just wanted to know if bonfire was defined anywhere.
It is defined in the fire code.
Awesome.
It's in the definition section. I did not bring my...
That's okay. I, I'm thinking of Councilmember Rogers and the question of like, you know, what do they call those things that people, the fire ring or the fire pit or the whatever? Because this is saying you can't do a bonfire unless it's in, unless the fire is contained in a barbecue pit or similarly approved container, which to me is a, and it says that a permit must be obtained. So is, is it the number of people who are at it that makes it a bonfire? Is it the size of the fire?
I believe it's defined by size, correct?
Okay. I just don't want us to...
So a bonfire as defined by the fire code, is an outdoor fire utilized for ceremonial purposes?
Aha, like it. Burning the bees. Okay, thanks. That was my only question. Council, any questions? Are you guys okay? All right, thumbs up. Onward, onward.
Onward. Mr. Osborne, I'm going to turn it over to you for your recommendations.
Just to clarify, just the recommendations that we just went over?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to read this?
Yes.
That's fine. All right. A recommendation of the adoption of the ICC codes with the amendments from the building officials, Bastrop Fire Department, Bastrop Power and Light, and the recommendation for not adopting the international property maintenance code or international wildland interface code at this time. So do we want to, do we want to make...
We can't so because we're not posted for voting, but...
Okay. So, so...
So Mayor and Council, if there are no further conversations relative to these recommendations, staff is preparing the ordinance and it will be on your agenda next Tuesday for the first reading and the first adoption according to the schedule that we put together back in March that you approved. So they have reviewed it, stayed on schedule. There was a public meeting that was held to engage the public. Nobody came. The reason for that, we believe, is, is that the 2018 codes have been adopted by every other city. So it's not something different from the industry. They're doing it elsewhere. So there wasn't reason to come here and engage because most of the other cities of any size in the area are already there. So if there's no other process, you'll see it Tuesday night for the first reading and the first adoption.
So you guys, with each of your disciplines, you're cool with everything you've got before you?
Yes. I really, actually, I like the 2018 code. It actually gives us some leeway that the 2009 code, I'm going to try to push on it. It didn't really make sense. And it's, I think it's overall very clarified. And I've asked other like, people who own electrical companies in this town, and they've been operating off the 2017 NEC code for, since 2017. Yeah. So they didn't, they didn't even know that we were still on the 2009 codes. So like I said, I think overall, everybody's pretty happy with the 2018 IBC codes.
Outstanding, outstanding. Any other questions for council? All right. Fantastic. Good job. It is 7:21 and council, get a motion to adjourn from someone?
Sure.
All right. We are adjourned at 7:21. You want to adjourn your board?
Motion to adjourn.
Yay.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, so very much. Appreciate it.